The Board of Trustees of the City University of New York. This board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise which interferes with board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. May I now call on everyone to take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry? Thank you. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the board live on cable channel 75. The meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream, providing service worldwide via personal computers. The public session of this board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed on the CUNY website. Trustee Wellington Chen was nominated last week by Mayor de Blasio as a lay member of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Governor Cuomo has announced that he intends to appoint trustee Carol Robles-Ramon to the SUNY Board of Trustees. We hope that appointment will not be official for a while so Carol can continue her current service on this board. The board held its public hearing on the calendar of this board meeting. On Tuesday, January 20, 2015, University Faculty Senate Chair and Trustee Terrence Martel chaired the meeting. That was also attended by University Student Senate Chair and Trustee Joseph Awaji and members of the Chancellery. A summary of this proceeding has been circulated to the trustees and the chancellor's cabinet and a transcript is available in the office of the secretary. On behalf of the board, I want to extend our deepest condolences to the families of the following individuals who had close ties to the CUNY family. We mourn the passing of Governor Mario M. Cuomo, who also served as lieutenant governor and Secretary of State, whose oratorical skills were matched only by his passionate commitment to a lifetime of public service. He transformed the lives of many New Yorkers, including many from the CUNY family. We extend sincere condolences to First Lady Matilda Cuomo, Governor Andrew Cuomo, and to the Cuomo family. We mourn the death of our colleague, the Honorable Herman Bedio, City College class of 1951, former congressman, New York City Deputy Mayor, Bronx Borough President, lawyer and accountant. Herman served on this board for many years as a trustee from 1980 to 1982 and again from 1990 to 2000. He became Vice Chair of the Board in February 1997 and then served as the Chair of the Board from 1999 to 2001. We will sorely miss him. We extend condolences to his wife, Gail, his son, David, who was a lecturer at Lehman College, and to the entire Bedio family. We also mourn the passing of Beth Meyerson, graduate of Hunter College. She was a New Yorker who was in the public eye for decades as Miss America in 1945, as a television personality, as a force in public affairs, who was a good friend to CUNY. She died on December 14. Our condolences to her family. CUNY will deeply miss Dr. Juan Flores, who passed away on December 2. A Queens native, he received his bachelor's degree from Queens College and received masters and terminal degrees in German from Yale University. In 1975, he started working at Centro, the Center for Puerto Rican Studies at Hunter College, where the Latino Studies curriculum was being developed. Through this, he was hired as a professor of Black and Puerto Rican Studies and taught for many years before moving to NYU in 2006. Our deepest condolences to his family. We also mourn the passing of another good friend of CUNY, former state senator Owen Johnson, who served for 40 years in the New York State Senate before stepping down two years ago. He was Vice Chair of the Senate Higher Education Committee and Chair of the Senate Finance Committee. He will be deeply missed. We also mourn the passing of Stephen Levine, an uncommonly kind man with rare depth, who was the coordinator for educational programs at the LaGuardia Wagner Archives. He will especially be remembered as an integral leader of the team that created CUNY's elegant calendars for nearly a decade. Our condolences to his family. Dr. Alex Chigozadi passed away on December 15. He was a vibrant leader at the College of Staten Island, who served as the Dean of Science and Technology. Our condolences to his family. And our deepest sympathies go to Charmaine Worthy of CUNY's Office of Student Affairs on the passing of her father on January 12. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The CUNY School of Professional Studies was ranked in the top 15% of U.S. World News Report's list of the 2015 Best Online Bachelor's Degree Programs. Of the 214 institutions listed, CUNY's School of Professional Studies ranked third. Congratulations. Baruch College was ranked as the number one feeder school to Morgan Stanley by Business Insider and number four among top colleges for finance and financial management by USA Today. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I call on trustee Rita DiMartino to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three CUNY students are recipients of the prestigious Benjamin A. Gilman Scholarship for Spring 2015, sponsored by the U.S. Department of State. Gilman Scholars receive up to $5,000 to apply towards their study abroad program costs. The aim of the program is to support students who do not traditionally study abroad. The winners are Stephanie Petit Home of City College, Martania McDonald of Lehman College, and Eleanor Zuniga, CUNY B.A.B.S. Program at Hunter College. Congratulations. Twenty-five CUNY community college students are recipients of the Gutman Transfer Scholarship for Spring 2015, sponsored by the Stella and Charles Gutman Foundation. Gutman Scholars receive up to $4,000 scholarship, paid over two years to apply towards their transfer to one of the five eligible CUNY senior colleges: Brooklyn College, City College, Hunter College, Lehman College, and Queens College. Congratulations. Brooklyn College student Keely Sheridan is one of 12 students selected for the George J. Mitchell Scholarship, which provides tuition, housing, and a stipend for travel and living expenses for study in Ireland and Northern Ireland. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. You have a list of grants and gifts received by the university since our December 1, 2014 meeting. That list of grants and gifts is on the table. May I now call on Chancellor Millican to present his report?
Chairman Schmidt, we left you a message on behalf of the PFC, some letters, and we're now going to leave a message as we leave the meeting. No contract, no peace. 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 No contract, no peace.
All right. Chancellor Millican?
Thank you, Chairman Schmidt. Some of us will be out and beat the snow a little earlier this evening. Happy to welcome all of you to the first meeting of the year and what I predict will be the shortest meeting of the year. I have a few things I want to report, but I'm aware that if there was ever an interest in brevity, it is today. As you know, following the governors and mayors' example, we closed the university early today to allow people to get home, and we will be closed tomorrow except for essential employees and essential services. You will be happy to know that this evening, you are all essential members of the CUNY team. Thank you for being here. I want to highlight a few items that have been in the news and discussed lately. Bring them to your attention. First, the president's proposal for free community college, which was announced a couple of weeks ago, to wide reaction from the public and the media. And despite a wide range of views on the merits of the proposal for free community college tuition, there has been almost universal support for the message for the need to increase timely completion at community colleges across the country. In the president's announcement, CUNY was the one program singled out for successful progress in timely degree completion. CUNY's accelerated study in associate programs, or ASAP. The president cited ASAP as a model program for moving students quickly and successfully to graduation, a program that other community colleges across the country should emulate. The press, notably The New York Times, The New York Daily News, and Bloomberg News, while not necessarily embracing the free community college initiative specifically focused editorially on the great value of CUNY's ASAP program, which had an extraordinary 57% three-year graduation rate, over three times the national graduation rate for community colleges. There are copies of these articles at your place for your information. I know that, like me, you are gratified that CUNY's ASAP program has become a standard bearer nationally for best practices in community college persistence and graduation efforts. We should remember that ASAP began as a small pilot program in 2007, led by John Mogalescu and his ABLE team, and the fruits of these experiments take some time to ripen, but this is a tremendous success. And John, thank you, thank your team, and thanks to our presidents at the community colleges who've done so much to make this program successful.[806.01][806.01][applause] There will be much continued attention, as there should be, nationally to graduation rates for colleges and universities at all levels, from policymakers at the national, state, and local levels, from the media, and from families. And while we share in this interest in increasing persistence and shortening the time to degree, I want to urge some caution, because not every student and not every institution starts at the same place. So I think we need to be careful when we look at these comparisons. We're going to hold ourselves to the highest standards, but it's well-known that, on average, the chances for graduation correlate strongly with education level of parents and increasingly income. For instance, the chances for graduation by age 25 of students born into families in the top quintile of income is 54%. The chances for graduation by age 25 of students born into families at the lowest quintile is 9%. CUNY's mission will continue to be access and affordability in the broadest sense, and so we'll have challenges that accompany that mission. And in the end, the measurement of value added by an institution is appropriate one, and on that score, I'm convinced, we'll do well. I'm confident that we'll see steady improvement, thanks in part to the mayor's investment in ASAP and in STEM programs, the first year of which we enjoyed this year and are making a substantial difference at CUNY. Last month, at the White House College Opportunity Day of Action, I announced that the City University of New York would commit to graduating 15,000 additional associate degree holders over the next decade by expanding CUNY's highly successful preparatory initiatives. This was one of the few programs highlighted by the president and the White House at that meeting. Closer to home, the governor's executive budget was released last week, and will be continued to be reviewed by our budget and finance teams at the CUNY central office and at the colleges. I provided the board with a summary earlier today of the highlights of the governor's budget, and Matt Sapienza is here to respond to any questions I can't handle after I highlight a few items. I'm sure Matt will be diplomatic. A few key points. On the operating side, for the senior colleges, the executive proposal increases the senior college appropriation by 70.7 million. This increase is comprised of $12 million tied to the creation of performance incentive plans, one of the new initiatives proposed by Governor Cuomo, and an additional appropriation of $61 million from the fall 2015 tuition increase. Legislative appropriations for the SEEK and Murphy Institute were not included in the budget proposal, and the executive budget did not cover any new mandatory cost increases. For community colleges, the executive budget maintains base aid at current levels. Legislative allocations for the ASAP program and child care centers similarly not included in the executive budget. Some of the major new initiatives proposed by the governor include community school grants for community colleges, the Get on Your Feet Loan Forgiveness Program, and the standardization of financial aid award letters. We will continue to work with the office of the governor and the legislature during the budget process. We're pleased to see that the governor's support for the New York Dream Act, which will offer state-supported tuition to students whose parents are undocumented immigrants. As you know, CUNY had a record 678 applicants for the Dream U.S. Scholarship Program and a record 242 winners. This new state program, if successful, will be good news indeed to those students who were not fortunate enough to win a scholarship in the Dream U.S. program. Governor Cuomo has proposed $3 million for the New York Early Childhood Professional Development Institute, led by CUNY's Sherry Cleary. I am a strong supporter of the investment in early childhood education and development as a necessary part of the strategy to meet our education attainment goals, and you will hear more from me about this in the future. Colleges and universities, as you know, are catalysts for economic development, and I was pleased to see that the governor is proposing additional funding for CUNY 2020 and startup New York funding for CUNY. I'll be testifying on our budget before the Senate Finance Committee and the Assembly Ways and Means Committee on February 10, and we'll have more to report the next time we meet. Even closer to home, Mayor de Blasio will be here at Baruch on February 3 to deliver his State of the City address. We look forward to hosting that event. Some additional good news. The preliminary data indicate that enrollment for our January 2015 winter sessions across CUNY will exceed 21,000 students, represents an increase of more than 20% compared with last year, a six-fold increase from 2006 enrollments. It's good work on the part of our college campuses and should result in better graduation rates going forward. A final note, you have a can in front of you of Pepsi. The significance of this, if you're thirsty, I invite you to try it. It has become my new favorite drink. CUNY has reached an agreement with Pepsi-Cola Bottling Company of New York for $21 million in support for CUNY. You will now see Pepsi trucks throughout the city, and you will see over $5 million -- well, you won't probably individually see over $5 million Pepsi cans unless you're a really big fan, but $5 million Pepsi cans will have CUNY's key messages on them, including this one, "High-quality academics plus 80% graduate debt-free." I want to commend the CUNY staff that negotiated this agreement and thank the Pepsi-Cola Bottling Company of New York for their support of CUNY and for helping us with this important messaging. Mr. Chairman, that includes my report on this snowy day. I am happy to respond to any questions about the budget proposal or other matters, and I am also delighted to defer to Matt Sapienza for any additional points about the budget or to defer to somebody more able to respond to your tough questions.
No, really nothing to add to what the chancellor said. As the chancellor mentioned, an analysis was sent out to all the trustees earlier today. That analysis is at each of your seats. It'll be posted to the CUNY website in the next day or so, and the CUNY budget request was also sent out to all of the trustees recently, and that's also on the CUNY website. But the chancellor said we're happy to take any questions about what was contained in the state budget.
Any questions or comments for the chancellor or for Matt? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. We'll turn now to the policy items that require a vote. I will move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for January 26, 2015. There's a copy of this report on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of the report or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, the chancellor's university report is adopted. I will move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of December 1, 2014. You'll find a copy of the minutes in your meeting books. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any revisions or suggestions for changing the minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, the minutes are adopted. We'll turn now to our committees that have reports. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs, Chairman Joseph Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on January 5, 2015. After approval of the minutes of the prior meeting, the committee approved the following resolutions. Calendar item 3A is a resolution requesting that the board of the university authorize its general counsel to execute a contract on behalf of LaGuardia Community College to purchase and install a new chiller in Shanker Hall. The contract shall be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder or bidders after public advertisement and sealed bidding by the college pursuant to law and university regulations. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $600,000 during the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. The college will replace the obsolete and inoperable chiller with a new energy-efficient and environmentally-friendly chiller. Mr. Chairman, I approve the adoption of calendar item 3A.
I'll second that. Are there questions about the chiller?[1376.21][1376.21][laughing] Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, abstentions, that is adopted.
Calendar item 3B is a resolution to request that the university adopt a schedule of academic excellence fees for students in the Master of Fine Arts Program in the School of Arts and Sciences at Hunter College effective with the fall 2015 semester. The fee shall be $40 per credit for all resident and non-resident full-time students, as well as for resident and non-resident part-time students. The Hunter College MFA program in studio art is one of the most highly selective programs in the nation. The challenges of keeping abreast of the rapid advancement in the technologies and offering focused training for students make it critical to have an academic excellence fee to reinvest in the program. The college will continue to administer financial aid to assist students with the completion of their studies and to bear the basic operating cost of the studio arts facilities. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3B.
I'll second the item. Are there any questions for the committee on the academic excellence fees at Hunter? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that is adopted.
Calendar item 3C is a resolution requesting that the board of the university authorize the borrow of Manhattan Community College to issue purchase orders to Hayworth, Inc. against existing New York State contracts. Such purchases shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $2.2 million. The college will use this contract for various relocation, renovation, and expansion projects at 199 Chambers Street, including projects in connection with the damages sustained due to Hurricane Sandy. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and the adoption of calendar item 3C.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on 3C? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that is adopted.
And calendar item 3D is also a resolution requested that the Board of Trustees of the university authorizes to borrow Manhattan Community College to issue purchase orders to the Construction Force Services, Inc., for the purchase of various building construction trade services against an existing New York State contract. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1 million. The college will use this contract for building construction trade work and to repair areas affected by Hurricane Sandy, furniture installation, and to install parts for sustainability and a return on investment projects at 199 Church Street. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and the adoption of calendar item 3D.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on the item? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that is adopted.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes the report.
Thank you very much. Chairman Loda. We'll hear next from the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will now present for the board's approval the items that the Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered at its meeting on January 5. Item 4A amends the university's policy with regard to the honorary title of Professor Emeritus, which has historically been bestowed in gratitude to faculty members who have devoted a significant number of years of their professional lives to CUNY. The title has no financial remuneration associated with it. While the board's criteria for automatic conferral of the title are being retained, this amendment will permit college presidents to bestow the title on additional faculty members with professorial titles if the action is recommended by campus personnel and budget committees. Mr. Chair, I present item 4A for the board's consideration.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on 4A? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that is adopted.
Thank you. Item 4B amends the governance plan of Brooklyn College to eliminate committee interviews of candidates for promotion and tenure. Under the current governance plan, school committees interview each candidate and also interview the chairperson of that candidate's department. This practice constitutes a departure from best practices nationwide. The governance plan will now provide instead that the school committees shall meet and discuss candidates with the dean of their respective schools in order to clarify and explain the written record. Mr. Chair, I present item 4B for the board's consideration.
I'm happy to second that. Are there questions on the governance plan amendment? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that carries.
Calendar items 4C through 4J are naming opportunities at three colleges, which I will present as a group. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed these matters and recommends their approval, and I am pleased to note that collectively they represent monetary gifts to the university in excess of $28 million. At Brooklyn College, items 4C and 4D, the MD-SAS Investment Academy, and the Marshall G. Kaplan's Chair in Municipal Government Accounting. At Hunter College, items 4E through 4I, the Jonas Nursing Honor Scholarship, the Evelyn Lauder Nursing Fund, the Evelyn Lauder Faculty Scholars Program, and the Evelyn Lauder Scholarship Program. The Baker Theater Building, the Bell and George Strel Executive Leadership Fellows Program, and the Isabel Meyer May Student Lounge. And at John J. College of Criminal Justice, item 4J, the Arthur B. Hill Lecture Hall. Mr. Chair, I present items 4C through 4J for the board's consideration.
I'm happy to second those. Are there any questions on these naming items? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, those carry.
Mr. Chair, since our committee met, two additional matters have come to our attention that is of time-sensitive nature, and therefore we would like to bring them to the board now for consideration. Copies are on the table for your review. This first item is number 4K, a proposed amendment to the Queens College Academic Senate Charter. The amendment revises the charter to allow one adjunct faculty member to The amendment revises the charter to allow one adjunct faculty member to serve as an at-large senator in the college's academic center. This is being done to ensure that the viewpoint of abjuncts will be heard and in recognition of the commitment and contributions of adjunct faculty members to Queens College. Mr. Chair, I present Items 4K for the board's consideration.
I'll second that. Are there any questions on the Queens College item? No. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that's adopted.
The final matter I wish to bring to the board's attention is Item 4L. Each year since 2001, in response to the events of 9/11, the university has extended military leave and health and welfare benefits coverage to university employees who are recalled from the reserves to active duty related to the war on terrorism. This resolution authorized the continuation of leave and benefits for those employees through December 31, 2015. Mr. Chair, I present Item 4L for the board's consideration.
I will second that. Are there questions on the item for the committee? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that item carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I have an item to present, a resolution which I'm happy to move, a resolution to permit Queens College to confer a Doctor of Humane Letters, Honoris Causa, upon Carol King, a former student of the college. Ms. King is a world-renowned singer and songwriter, the winner of four Grammy Awards, has been inducted into both the Songwriters Hall of Fame and the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame for her songwriting. In 2013, she was, became the first woman to receive the Gershwin Prize for Popular Song. President Obama gave her this honor at a special ceremony at the White House. In addition, Ms. King is actively involved with environmental organizations in support of wilderness preservation. I'll move the resolution. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Anybody want to sing? All in favor, please say, everything is beautiful. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that resolution carries. That concludes the business for this public meeting of the board. I think we've set an all-time speed record. The meeting is adjourned.